Good morning and welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners Tuesday Board Meeting. For introduction purposes, my name is Todd Wilchin. I am the Chair of the County Board this year. On my left, we have fellow Commissioners Bill Avery and Deb Shore. On my right, we have fellow Commissioners Roma Amundson and the Vice Chair Jennifer Brinkman. Joining us this morning from the County Attorney's Office is Jen Holloway. From the County Clerk's Office, we have the County Clerk Dan Nolte. And Monae McCollum. From the County Board Office, we've got our Chief Administrative Officer Carrie Egan and our Chief Deputy Administrative Officer Anne Ames. Now if you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you everybody. Mr. Clerk, would you please start the agenda?
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed in today's open meeting is available from the County Clerk staff at the front of the hearing room. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancasterne.gov.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda and add a proclamation declaring December 5th, 2018 as a day of mourning for President George H.W. Bush.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the agenda to include a proclamation declaring tomorrow a national day of mourning in Lancaster County in honor of the 41st President. Any discussion about amending the agenda? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. And would you like me to read the resolution?
Yeah. I guess we would need to make a motion to approve the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation. Mr. Clerk, would you please read the proclamation?
This is a proclamation declaring December 5th, 2018 as a day of mourning for President George H.W. Bush. Whereas on Friday, November 30th, 2018, former President George H.W. Bush passed away. And whereas on Monday, December 3rd, 2018, President Donald Trump issued a proclamation announcing Wednesday, December 5th, 2018, as a national day of mourning in honor of the late President Bush. And whereas Governor Pete Ricketts announced that state of Nebraska buildings will be closed on Wednesday, December 5th, 2018. Whereas the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners desire to honor the legacy of the late President George H.W. Bush by joining the federal and state governments in declaring December 5th, 2018 as a national day of mourning for the late President Bush. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners in Lancaster County, Nebraska, that Wednesday, December 5th, 2018, is declared a day of mourning for President George H.W. Bush. Be it further resolved that the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners calls upon all employees and residents to join the Lancaster County Board in honoring President George H.W.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Okay, agenda, item one are minutes. Approve of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, November 7th, excuse me, Tuesday, November 27th, 2018.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the last Board of Commissioners meeting. Any discussion or correction? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number two, real claims, approval of all claims processed through December 4th, 2018.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the claims processed through today. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is new business. Three A is appointment of Bob Utes, reappointment of Pat Heather and Jim Pinkerton on Lancaster County Extension Board for terms commencing January 1st, 2019, and then ending December 31st, 2021.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Great to see all of you on this chilly morning. Happy to be here today. And is it okay?
Yeah, I was gonna say, she can come up here.
Okay, so you've gotten the approval to go wherever there, Vicky. So today I'm here because we have some new members coming up for our Lancaster County Extension Board that we're seeking your appointment for. And also with us today is Vicky Jedlica that is taking a few pictures there. So I'll introduce them and then you can ask any questions that you have. So a returning board member, Jim Pinkerton, who I know you have seen before here, we're very happy that he is able to come back for another three-year term. So that begins in January. And then our newest, well, and I should say, Pat Heather, who was planning to be here, is kind of stuck up in Minnesota and so wasn't able to get back yesterday. So her apologies that she's not here, but she is our second returning board member. And then our brand-new member is Bob Utes from southern Lancaster County and a farmer down there, and we're happy to have Bob on as our newest member of the board. And so we are here today to have you please appoint them as our Lancaster Extension Board members for the next three years.
Well, we appreciate that very much, Ms. Wilbig. And so I know we've seen Mr. Pinkerton before. I don't know, Mr. Utes, if you want to come up and just tell us a little bit about yourself and...
Yes, thank you. I farm in southern Lancaster County, primarily between Sprague and Hickman, but then we reach east to the Bennett Panama area. So I farm with a family operation and that's, my son's even farming with us. So agriculture education is very important. So when I was asked to do this, I thought it'd be very interesting and I think it's a positive deal for the youth of our, and the farmers. You know, we get information from the extension. I worked with General Amundson over the years and I deployed to Afghanistan for a year and what we done was trained the extension agents. It was usually the USDA does that, but it was too dangerous of a situation, so they sent people with agriculture backgrounds over there. So in a very backwards part of the world, they were, they had extension agents and they were doing some good things and we feel we made a difference that's improving lives over there. So it is an interesting avenue and I'm kind of glad to be doing this in America, you know, so that's a little bit about me.
That's a great story.
Commissioner Amundson?
Yeah, and I just was going to say, you know, that you had served the country, you know, in your three, through the military. And when you were over in Afghanistan, what was it that you primarily did? Was it that you had worked with crop rotation and irrigation?
Yeah, you know, one of the, one of the, it's so basic. I, I'm a, you know, bro crop person and how they planted corn, they broadcasted corn like grass. So their yield was terrible. It was way too thick. So one of the simplest, I went across the area, we had helicopter here and drive there, and I done the simplest of thing. You know, I told them, have you ever heard of planting corn in rows? And they, of course, never heard of that. The Russians had killed everybody with an education in the Taliban, so it just went backwards into the Stone Ages. And I said, just plant shoulder width apart in a straight line, take a stick and poke two inches deep, drop kernel, step on it. And so like the next team that went from Nebraska, they showed, and if they would do that, I gave them a little bit of a hybrid seed corn. I had no idea what it was, it was from Pakistan, but they brought in some examples the next year and the error, the year there, I told them to plant it the way they do and they had little nub in ears and the ear that they done like ours looked almost like what we grow here. So they were very, they said, you know, let that guy know that it is making a difference. So they were very good people, they're good family people, so it was a great year in my life, so.
I appreciate sharing that story. Jim, do you want to tell us a little bit about your three years of experience on the Extension Board and your background and what you've enjoyed about the experience?
My background is that I grew up in Nebraska, raised on a farm, educated at the University of Nebraska, bachelor's in construction management, master's in regional planning. I have, I currently work for the state of Nebraska managing construction projects and my experience on the, on the board's been a good, positive. I think there's, there's, the board's doing wonderful things as far as their staff is doing a great job of education and working with the community. I think it even is something that could be expanded into a little more of the urban side of things, but, but I think that'll come eventually, so.
Thank you for volunteering your time.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you both and thank you. Obviously with Ms. Heather not being here, it's with winter weather, it's out of our control, but we very much do appreciate the Extension Board and their work, the Extension Office does, because it really does benefit all of Lancaster County, not just the people who live in the rural areas, but also the, like you mentioned, the people living in the urban areas. A lot of the schools in the city center benefit greatly from the 4H programs. And so more we can do to expose young people to those programs, I think, would be a benefit to the county. So thank you very much for, for your service.
Thank you for your support.
I move the reappointment, the appointment of Bob Utes and the reappointment of Pat Heather and Jim Pinkerton to the Lancaster County Extension Board.
Thank you. Sorry, second? Both.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Now, now is there discussion? Would you like to thank him now?
No.
Okay.
Got that done.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Three B has been withdrawn at the request of the applicant. Three C is a resolution in a matter of authorizing the county clerk to issue payments while the county board is adjourned.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, authorizing the county clerk to issue payments while the county board is adjourned for the holidays. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. D is a resolution in a matter of authorizing the use of county visitors' improvement funds for visitor promotion in amount of $182,000 for the period of July 2018 through October 2018.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, authorizing the use of the county visitor improvement funds for visitor promotion. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. E are amendments to the administrative services agreements with Prudential Retirement Insurance and Annuity Company, lowering the minimum annual revenue amount for Prudential to 7.5 basis points for the following: Lancaster County Employees Retirement Plan and Lancaster County Deferred Compensation Plan.
I'm Carrie Egan, Administrator for the Board. This is a 25% reduction in our fees. Ordinarily, this money would go into our expense account, however, the feeling of the Pension Review Committee is that we probably need to try to lower the cost to the employees even more. This would qualify us for some lower-cost share class hole in the different funds, so that's what we'll be pushing for, is to reduce the fees further for the participants in the retirement and deferred compensation programs. And also, it is only good for two years. We're going to renegotiate it at the end of two years. They originally proposed doing this for a five-year period. Frank Picarelli from Segal Marco said, no, keep your powder dry and let's do it two years and revisit it then, because you don't know what the market's going to be.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. Any questions?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the amendments to the administrative services agreement with Prudential Retirement Insurance. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. F is a grant contract with People City Mission in amount of $219,000 for housing, community resource allocation, and coordination at the People City Mission's Curtis Center to address homelessness for Lancaster County adult drug court participants. The term of the grant contract is from October 1st, 2018 through September 30th, 2022.
Good morning. Kim Etherington with Community Corrections. This is the grant that was awarded in September, first part of October, to address the homelessness of individuals coming out of the criminal justice system into the adult drug court. It's also going to touch on a little bit of underemployment issues that we have, so this will allow us to house up to three people at the City Mission at a time at the Curtis Center.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract with People City Mission. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. G is a recommendation from a purchasing agent and county engineer to award and execute two purchase orders with Sid Dillon Ford, Inc. for three 2019 Ford 350 trucks for state of Nebraska contract number 15038OC. The total amount for both purchases, for both purchase orders is $170,003.
Good morning. Ron Bohaty with Lancaster County Engineering, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have of the purchase on the trucks.
Any questions?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to award and execute two purchase orders with Sid Dillon Ford. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. H is a recommendation from the purchasing agent and Lancaster County engineer to award purchase orders for supply and hauling of crush rock surface course material to Buell Trucking and RL Team and Construction. The total amount for both purchase orders is $826,400.
Ron Bohaty with Lancaster County Engineering, again, to answer any questions about the rock purchase this year.
Any questions? Commissioner Shore?
I know there was some concern about the quantity of rock we were going to be able to obtain as needed to share. Are you sure, still sharing those concerns or things looking better?
I think things are getting better. We are at our limit of what we can put in most of our stockpiles with this order and we're right at our budget line.
I think she was talking about availability.
Oh, the rock is available, sorry. The gravel is what we're having problems with right now as far as availability in some areas. We are getting some delivered. We started last Wednesday, I think, but the rock is readily available and if it's approved, they're ready to start tomorrow.
Okay.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to award the purchase order for the crush rock surface material. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Three I is an interlocal agreement with the city of Lincoln for county access to workspace software, software support, and licenses. The term of the agreement shall be one year from the date of execution. The cost to county is $22,348.76.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer, and today David Young is here with me from the city of Lincoln. He's not lost, but this is an agreement that David and I have been working on for actually about 24 months. About a year ago, we, through the planning board, made the criteria that everybody who works consulting with the city or the county uses the same standards for their drawings. You may not be aware, but at Lancaster County Engineering, we have not had modern design software, ever. So this, having an interlocal agreement with the city to, to share in the pool of licenses enables us not to double up on the server. It's very efficient. And then the other thing is, is that when the city annexes or when we're cross-sharing information with each other, it will make that transition seamless. So a couple of weeks ago, there was an annexation of structures and roads and then the information we gave to the city, because it wasn't computerized to modern-day standards, they have to re-put in their system by hand. And we can really do better than that. And so this is an opportunity to streamline and be more efficient. I'm really excited about it. Hopefully David Young is really excited about it. And Dave, I don't know if you had anything to say.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you very much for giving me a couple of minutes to talk about this issue. As Pam was saying, we've really been working with the county on this for almost four years now. This started with the land-based consolidation effort in 2014. We've worked with County Assessor on that. 2015, we created the Unified Plats submissions standard in partnership with County Engineer and County Assessor. Now we are working to standardize on the same software. So it's, it's the little detail things like this are not very sexy, but what they allow us to do is take design software that we have agreed to, you'll notice a comment in there, one unified workspace. Basically, we all agree to the same layering standards. So all the street lines are the same thickness of black, great, we can import them from one system to the other. We can share our design files with the county engineer and vice versa. And that allows us to take from MicroStation the design software and import directly into GIS. So there's no redrawing. That is a huge benefit for both agencies, since we both use, we use GIS as our bible, if you will, our asset bible. Furthermore, it allows Public Works to take those files and import them directly into Beehive, our asset management software.
Any questions? Commissioner Amundson?
Don't have a question, but just a comment really, because I think this is a great example of collaboration between the city and the county, creates efficiencies and it's kind of a cost-sharing sort of thing. And it certainly would streamline things in the, in the, in the future. And so for the last four years, thanks for your efforts in this regard.
Thank you.
And I guess my only question would be for the county engineer. So are you going to have to go back and, I guess, update all of the county plots and although...
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Wilchin. So these have been already, they, for a long time, they were drawn, the plaits were drawn, redrawn in GIS, and then the assessor's office redrew them separately to get the parcels. And so when we fixed that layering concern at both the city and the county level, that position, that, all that extra work went away and it was significant and added a lot to our efficiency. And so as far as the actual engineer drawings for bridges and roads, we, we won't go back, we'll go forward. And so it doesn't make a lot of sense to go back. And then, I mean, it, it really is a super exciting thing to do and in addition to that, it's going to add a lot of efficiency to our workflow. And so I'm excited about it. I don't know if David's as excited as I am, but it brings us to the 21st...
He looks excited.
He looks excited. Well, I think he's on his second cup of coffee.
It's, it's super geeky, but you'll allow county engineer from here forward to actually export from GIS into the design software.
It's going to add a lot of efficiency and bring us into the 21st century, so it's a big deal.
Commissioner Shore has a question.
And David said you've been working on this for four years, and I hate to use this pun, but is this the end of the road or are there other things that you're going to tackle next as far as efficiencies?
So when you think about what we do as a core business, we build things. And that really involves kind of a three-step lifecycle. You design it and build it, you import it into an asset management system, and then you put it in your record system. So we use OnBase, the county uses Trim. So I think we've got now the design software that the city, Public Works Department and County Engineer have agreed to. We have the asset management software, which for us is GIS. We've agreed to, and we've agreed to the same standards. I think long-term, we should have a broader conversation about one document management system. That's a huge thing to tackle and I'm not proposing to tackle that today or get shot over it, but I think we should as an, as two organizations really look at that and the cost benefit from doing that. But once you have that, you will have a complete lifecycle with us using the same software.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for either Mr. Shaw or Ms. Dingman?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the interlocal agreement for workspace software. Any discussion or additional discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Commissioners. J is an amendment to county contract C-18-315 with Felsberg, Holt, and Uwig for additional services related to the replacement of county bridge F-88. The cost to county for additional services is $13,038.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer, when I was here a couple of weeks ago, asking for an additional cost for a yellow book appraisal for this job, given that it has gone into a different area due to this ground being assigned, being funded with WRP money. So this is for additional services because we are going to have to mitigate saline wetlands within the marsh in this area. Bridge F-88 is located on North 14th Street. It is the second worst bridge in the county. And so I, I think it is also on a hundred-point scale, around 30. So we need to get moving with this bridge and this will help us hopefully wrap up the environmental certification.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the county contract with Felsberg, Holt, and Uwig. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. K is a memorandum of understanding with Moore Medical LLC using the Sourcewell contract number 06147-MML to provide health and safety, medical, surgical, and first aid-related equipment, supplies, accessories, and services. The term of the MOU is from August 19th, 2018 through July 25th, 2019, with the option to renew for three additional one-year terms. The pricing will be pursuant to the Sourcewell contract. The cost to county is not to exceed $50,000.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the MOU with Moore Medical LLC. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes. Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. L is our contracts to provide unit price moving installation services effective upon execution by all parties through February 28th, 2019, with the following: Office Installation Specialists, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $10,000, and World Class Office Installers, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $8,000.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the unit price contracts with two vendors for moving and installation services. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is number four, consent items. Utility permits for the following: Number 1740, allowing Black Hills Energy to install a new underground gas line for South Ridge Acres subdivision, northwest quadrant of South 82nd Street and Roca Road. There is no cost to the county. Number 1739, allowing Black Hills Energy to install a new underground gas pipeline under Martel Road from South 77th Street to South 82nd Street. There is no cost to the county. Number 1741, allowing Black Hills Energy to install a gas regulating station on the northwest corner of South 82nd Street and Hickman Road. There is no cost to the county. Amendments to the following: County Contract C-14-626 with Cardiac Science Corporation using the Purchasing Solutions Alliance Contract Number 14-100 for automated external defibrillators related products and services. The amendment renews the contract from October 9th, 2018, through October 8th, 2019. The cost to county is not to exceed $3,000. Contract C-16-32 with Interconnect, Inc., doing business as Interconnects, using the University of Nebraska Agreement, RFP 2307-14-4617 for unit price electronic video surveillance equipment and installation. The amendment renews the contract from December 1st, 2018, through November 30th, 2019. Estimated cost to county is not to exceed $25,000. County Contract C-16-698 with Sap Brothers Petroleum, Inc. for annual supply absorbance floor dry. The amendment renews the contract from December 11th, 2018, through December 10th, 2019. The cost to county is not to exceed $1,100. County Contract C-15-623 with Cash Money 24/7 LLC for providing and servicing automated teller machine. The amendment renews the contract from December 8th, 2018, through December 7th, 2019. County Contract C-11-164 with Clean and Sober Living for sober living units. The amendment renews the lease agreement from July 1st, 2018, through June 30th, 2020. County Contract C-14-606 with Sarve County to provide microfilming and scanning services. The amendment extends the term of the agreement from February 1st, 2019, through January 31st, 2020. Change order for County Contract C-18-482 with TCW Construction, Inc., to extend the project completion date from December 15th, 2018, to July 1st, 2019, due to circumstances beyond the control of the contractor. Change order number three for County Contract C-18-481 with Skodeller Construction, to extend the project completion date from November 30th, 2018, to May 31st, 2019, due to circumstances beyond the control of the contractor. Rightaway contract with Zobo Investments, Inc., North First Street and Bluff Road in the total amount of $398, and this is for two contracts. Senate Public Hearing on Tuesday, December 8th, 2018, at 9:00 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building regarding Tax Amendment 1801 Wind Energy Regulations.
Move approval of the consent items.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent items. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number five is public comment, those wishing to speak on items relating to county business, not on agenda, may do so at this time.
Okay, anyone from the public wishing to speak on an item related to county business but not on the agenda? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, would you please continue with the announcements?
The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, December 6th, 2018, at 8:30 a.m. in the Bell Oxford Studio of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, December 11th, 2018, at 9:00 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447, or commissar@lancaster.inny.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on Link TV City. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln.inny.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on Link TV and can be viewed on YouTube.
I move adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Any discussion? I'm sorry, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Amundson.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, that concludes the Board Commissioners Meeting. I'm going to go ahead and start the agenda for the Lancaster County Board of Equalization. Mr. Clerk, would you please start with the agenda?
The Lancaster Open Meetings Act is located on the fourth rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the county clerk's staff at the front of the hearing room. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster.inny.gov. Agenda 91 are minutes, approve of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held[1655.83]